Welcome, everyone. I now call the March 19th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I would like to announce that during the month of Ramadan, we will be breaking briefly after sunset so that our Bothell community members can break fast without missing out on participating in council meetings. Ramadan holds significant religious importance for Muslims and is often recognized through fasting, acts of kindness and devotion, and personal growth. If you'd like to learn more about Ramadan, consider reading more on the city's DEI Educational Resources webpage. Our break this evening will be at approximately 7:22 PM. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz. Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember Kerd.
Here.
Councilmember Manke.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra. You're muted, but you're here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He hasn't eaten in a while. Hitting the mute button could be hard.
All present, with the exception of Councilmember Zornz, who is absent unexcused.
Thank you. All right, before we adjourn to executive session, we are going to do a proclamation for Youth Art Month. Whereas Youth Art Month was started in 1961, and whereas art education provides substantial educational benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students, and whereas Youth Art Month encourages commitment to the visual arts by students, educators, and community organizations, and whereas Youth Art Month brings attention to K-12 visual art education and encourages support for quality school art programs, and whereas Youth Art Month provides a forum for acknowledging skills that are fostered through experiences in the visual arts that are not possible in other subjects in the curriculum, and whereas art education develops students' creative potential and improves problem-solving and critical thinking skills by reinforcing and bringing to life what students learn in other subjects, and whereas the National Art Education Association, in conjunction with the Washington Art Education Association, strives to improve the well-being of our communities by upgrading visual awareness through art education and cultural awareness within Washington State and the United States as a whole. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim March 2024 is Youth Art Month and encourage all residents to give their full support to school art programs for our youth. And I believe we have Nicole and Lyra here to accept the proclamation.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much, Mayor Thompson, and council members and community. We are so thrilled to be here today and to have you recognize March as Youth Art Month. The visual arts are a very important thing for all of us, not just for the youth in our community. It is something that helps with innovation, creative thinking, and we are just so excited to be able to especially celebrate visual arts this month in March. So I did want to highlight a couple things that are happening in the community to celebrate Youth Art Month. So the first one is that the North Shore School District is having a Youth Art Month art show featuring the middle and high school visual arts students that are taking courses right now. And so that is happening at the NSD Admin Center the whole month of March, but there is a special reception for the young artists on March 27th from 6:00 to 7:00. So if anybody is interested in coming and, you know, specifically celebrating those artists on that night, that would be wonderful. We are also going to have an event called Creativity Connects Us, and this is going to be in Woodinville at the Woodinville Library, and it's an opportunity for families and kids to come to the library and to do some art-making and to create a collaborative art piece together. And that's put on by two groups, the Woodinville Creative District, that's doing some work to get a creative district in Woodinville, and then also an advocacy group called Elementary Art for North Shore that's trying to increase awareness about visual art education and to bring visual art into the Elementary School Day. I have, I'm gonna hand these over for you all, and then I also have some really great Visual Arts Matter resources that I'd love for each of the council members to have. And then we have our friend Lyra here to talk to.
Thank you for celebrating Youth Art Month with me. It's such an honor to represent all the young artists out there who love art. Art helps me keep calm and express myself. Thank you for supporting me as a young artist.
Thank you, everybody. Let's get a picture really quick. Lucas, do you want to get in the picture?
All right. We will now adjourn to executive session pursuant to RCW 4230-110-1i, potential litigation for 30 minutes with no action expected. We will reconvene the regular meeting at 6:38 PM. Welcome back. It is now 6:38 PM. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And for council attending remotely, use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. Next up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to public engagement opportunities. We have a community budget survey where you can help shape the 2025-26 budget. You can check your mailbox for postcard mailer if you're one of the chosen few and complete by March 24th. If you didn't get a postcard, you can still take the survey on our website. There's a free pet event with Rainier Animal Fund Friday, April 15th, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM. You can bring your dog or cat to Bothell Police for vaccines, microchip, and pet license. It's first come, first served. Next up is public comment. We did the proclamation earlier. The city has accepted public comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do not have anybody signed up. However, we did receive written comment, and I will ask the audience if anybody wants to speak after I go over those. Before we begin that, public comments shall be limited to the topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker's comments being suspended. So the first written comment was from Alex Kaiser, who wrote in support of tenant protections. Mark Swanson wrote in regarding Tahoe retaining walls and BOPOP. Eric Swanson wrote in opposition to the Affordable Housing and Retaining Wall Code Amendments, and Susan Gardner wrote regarding the CFP process. That is all I have. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak? If so, please step to the podium, state your name. You'll have three minutes. None in the audience? Anybody in the virtual audience wishes to speak? Please use the raise hand function. We've got Mark Swanson. I'm gonna panel him in. Robin, can you set the timer when he's on? Thank you. Mark, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay. We'll begin your time when you're ready.
I'm ready now. Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead.
This has to do with the Planning Commission and the Council Subcommittee. I'm uncertain of whether or not it's legal to form a subcommittee of only three because that's not, that doesn't form a quorum, but I haven't reviewed the law. But it is a question. In addition to the number of the subcommittee to select planning commissioners, I'd like to note and just make a public record of that all members of the subcommittee are former and current members of the BOPOP Urbanist Group. I object to the lack of quorum with a three-person subcommittee. It's a matter of public disclosure commission record that Kristin Haas-Joiner donated $1,200 to Karsten Kurds' campaign, $1,000 to Amanda Dodd's campaign, and $1,000 to Mayor Thompson's campaign, and she just announced a couple weeks ago that she is a current BOPOP member. Well, I won't belabor the point any further. I think what's going on here is a violation of your oaths of office. It's my opinion that urban density does not result necessarily in economic resilience.
Mr. Swanson, please limit your comments to what the clerk mentioned earlier.
Yeah, interrupt me once again, please. The West Hill Subarea Comprehensive Plan is being violated and will be continued to be further violated with a heightened retaining wall. The West Hill is a liquefaction risk. This is not a DNS area. That's it, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, clerk. This way. All right, next up, we have reports. First up is the city manager report. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. I have two brief updates this evening, and if I can get promoted, I will be ready to share a slide here in a second. My first update relates to an item that's on the consent calendar tonight. Mainly, I want to just make it clear that next week, the council will be holding interviews for boards and commissions. What's on the consent calendar is a request to suspend recordings of the special meeting. Typically, in your rules, it does call for all meetings to be recorded. We have traditionally not recorded interviews. Allow people to have a little more free-flowing dialogue. What I also wanted to note is that because we've moved this meeting to the fourth Tuesday of the month, there will also be another meeting taking place in council chambers. So those council interviews will be down the hall in room 107, 108. For those who are interested in watching at home, it will be streamed online on YouTube and through the links provided on the agenda next week. It's also open for anyone who wants to sit in on. And then here in council chambers, the Landmark Preservation Board will be holding their meeting. So we'll make sure to, oh, I missed my cue, Robin. I'm so sorry. But we'll make sure to be able to guide people to the proper meeting. My second update is related to the fact that it is, we are coming into construction season, and we can provide more information on some other projects soon. But for tonight, I wanted to talk about something that's quite timely because it's related to this evening. So let me go ahead and get started here. All right. So, and that is on the Northeast 158th Street update. We're doing utility and roadway improvements, as we've mentioned earlier. And again, this is, the context of that is that we're getting ahead of some construction that'll take place for Bus Rabbit Transit or Stride. And as I think people would appreciate, when we know that there's utilities underground that need to be repaired, it makes sense to do that before a major road improvement so we don't have to tear up a brand-new road. So that's what we're doing right now, and I know, folks, anyone who's driven by 185th is well aware of the fact that it's closed. What we're here tonight to update is just to let people know that tonight there will be a variance that allows for evening construction. Typically, in our municipal code, Section 8.26.065, construction noise hours are limited to Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. But there are exceptions that can be granted for special circumstances, including the installation of sanitary sewer, domestic water, and electrical. In this case, the variance is for connection to new water pipes. So in this project, we are, our contractor that we're working with is switching from an existing eight-inch AC water line to new eight-inch ductile iron water line. And in order to do that switch, water has to be turned off. So there's a few key customers that are along that line, including Kids Corner, the memory care facility, Learning Center, and the North Shore Apartments, where, working with the people who are there, it became quite clear that having a service interruption of no water in the middle, or later at night, would be preferable. And so we're doing that when businesses are closed or when people are hopefully sleeping. The affected parties have been notified within 48 hours advance, which is required. And then also, we're fortunate, we have a fire station just down the block, but also, when the water is turned off in a section of the city, there is fire watch that is required in the code as well to make sure that everything stays safe. So that is taking place, but just wanted to share that with the council and the community tonight in case anybody sees something, and sometimes those evening repairs don't make sense. We'll just try and put it in context. Just to focus on this project, just for a quick second, too, of, again, I think that any time people drive by something that's closed, they wonder what's happening next. So the construction will be taking place through September, and again, then that's to get ahead of fall construction of the Stride project. And if anyone has any questions or is wanting to follow along, just a note that on our city's website, you can go to Traffic Impacts, and the projects, when there are road closures, are listed there. And in this case, there is a map, a schedule, and then updates, and there's a weekly update provided for what the construction activities will be taking place. So if anyone's interested, that's a place to follow along. So that concludes my presentation, but we will also now be welcoming two of our staff members to the table to share about a recent achievement that the city has had a few times, and that is that we've been granted the WELL City Award. And so we do have two members of our Wellness Committee. The city has a Wellness Committee made up employees, so they may look familiar to you, and you might not think of them as Wellness Committee employees, but here they are. So we're welcome tonight, Holly Simon and Janet Gere, to tell a little bit more about WELL City and what it means for the city and for our budget.
All right. So thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Again, I am Janet Gere in the Public Works Department, and this is Holly Simon in our Human Resources Department. And we're just gonna give you kind of an update on our status of the WELL City and its benefits. So, excuse me. Go ahead with the AWC trust portion.
Thank you. So as a part of our city, we are a part of Association of Washington Cities, or AWC. It is an employee benefits pool with other cities, towns, and local governments to provide quality, efficient, and cost-effective healthcare programs to all of our members. They offer resources and training to help support a healthy workforce, and they encourage cities to create a wellness program to utilize these resources, and they offer cost savings and incentives to meet the WELL City standards.
So on our Wellness Committee, currently, we have six members from five different departments. Our mission is to create opportunities for all City of Bothell employees to find and act upon their path to well-being by providing tools, resources, and removing barriers. We believe that promoting a healthy workplace matters, and we must meet individual and citywide goals and criteria in order to be eligible for the WELL City program. For example, 50% of our staff that are eligible for the AWC healthcare options must earn 350 points on their online system. This is done through various methods, such as attending trainings, participating in healthy habits and step challenges, and completing healthcare screenings. The city must also offer various learning sessions, activities, and events to promote all aspects of the wellness wheel of health. These include physical, financial, social, occupational, environmental, intellectual, spiritual, and emotional. To earn the WELL City distinction and receive a 2% healthcare premium discount, all requirements in six different standards must be met. For our leadership, all levels of leadership must support the employee health through their words and actions and participation in programs. We must adopt health-related policies and environmental supports to impact large groups of people and create a workplace that supports employee health. We have to work with partnerships and tap into resources that are both internal and external to extend the reach of our Wellness Committee. With program activities, we have planned wellness activities that are relevant to employee population, reflect multiple divisions of health, and provide opportunities to learn, experience, and practice healthy behaviors. For engagement, we have to help employees move beyond simply participating in order to truly engage in their own personal health, and we have to assess, evaluate, and constantly report our programs. So every year, we're evaluating to improve our process and our well-being program.
So what are, excuse me, so what are some of the benefits of this program? It leads to a healthier, happier workforce. And what that does is when employers place employee health among their core values, they create a workplace that enhances employee well-being, not just for themselves, but for their families as well. Employees enjoy greater health and job satisfaction, and our organization and community benefit from productive, engaged employees. So everyone wins. The other thing that it does is it helps reduce our healthcare costs, not just to the city, but to our employees as well. So for 17 years now, we have qualified for the WELL City Award, including this year. As a result, we have received a 2% discount on all of our medical premiums. Again, that is for the city and employees, directly into their premiums. This equates to over $1.8 million saved so far, and we expect it to approximately save over $100,000 in 2024 for medical premiums. In 2023, we had over 56% of our staff complete their online points. We offered over 20 different learning sessions, events, and trainings to promote employee health. Again, as Janet described, it isn't just for physical well-being. This is also emotional well-being, learning opportunities, activities, financial well-being. There's a lot more to it, as she has said, with the holistic approach in that wheel. And then in 2024, we have already had approximately 50% of our staff participate in the online program, and we're well on our way to qualifying for the award again. We are, again, are offering over 20 different learning sessions, events, and trainings to promote employee health, and we continue to offer these, and we are, I'm sorry, offering continued opportunities for staff to give back to our community as well and to participate in events like blood drives, food drives, and gift-giving opportunities. Other than that, thank you, guys, and if there's any questions, please let us know.
I'm not seeing any, so I'll just say thank you for the presentation, and we all learned a little bit more about the signs that we see as we go around the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
It's back to me now. For council committee reports, community reports, and conversations, do any council members have updates? Councilmember Kerd is quick on the draw.
Well, yeah, because I did go to a meeting for Sound Cities Association on March 13th, and among the topics discussed was King County Wastewater Treatment Division's Regional Wastewater Surfaces Plan, and that's something that we're kind of keeping a close eye on at the city because plans are calling for maybe doubling of rates in the next 10 years, and we want to make sure that the services that we're getting are relevant and build resiliency, not just paying money for services that we won't use or that are short-sighted. So it was generally an overview, and it's building off of previous planning work that was kind of stalled with the Department of Ecology, but hoping to get more updates in the future at the Public Affairs Committee and continue to ensure that the wastewater treatment surfaces that our city benefits from are resilient, and we're getting a good bang for our buck.
Thank you. Councilmember Alderks?
I have a couple. First up is the Solid Waste Committee that I served on. Like Councilmember Kerd said, there are expected rate increases over the next several years for solid waste management, and so they were reviewing what those might look like, but they're all projections at this point, so more information will be coming. But on a more fun topic, I can also give the community an update about the National League of Cities Conference. Last week, city manager Standard, Mayor Thompson, and myself went to Washington, DC for the National League of Cities, and we were able to meet with members of our congressional delegation. We met in Susan Del Bennett's office and talked about the federal funding priorities that we have for the city, and we were also able to participate in meetings with both of our senators, Murray and Cantwell, but with 100 or so other elected officials from the state of Washington at that meeting, and that was really cool to see us all in the same place. We also got to hear President Biden speak and members of his cabinet, including the Labor Secretary and the Secretary of Transportation. Pretty cool experience, and I would just strongly encourage members of council to attend next year for the experience. I also was able to participate in two committees, one, the Federal Advocacy Human Development Committee, as well as the Youth Education and Families Committee. And so those, both of those committees will be meeting at other times throughout the year, and I'll be participating in those as well. And so unless the mayor wants to add anything to that update, that's what I've got.
Thank you. I would just say that we, in our meetings, had a really good opportunity to kind of highlight some of the city's priorities and the things that we're working on to our congressional delegation as we actively go after federal help to help pay for some of those things. So it was a good opportunity to get some face time with the folks that would advocate for us at that level, and I would second everything Councilmember Alderks said. Councilmember Alderks and I also went to Eastside Transportation Partnership a little earlier this month, where we got updates from Metro, Sound Transit, PSRC, and WashDOT. And the balance meeting was really just spent in a discussion from the different jurisdictions, talking about their different transportation priorities. What was really heartening to me was that we weren't an outlier. You know, the cities on the east side are all facing really similar challenges in terms of what, how we get around, and there's a growing consensus on how to deal with that and what to do, and focusing on moving people around more efficiently and with a lower climate impact. And transit was a hot topic in the meeting, so that was encouraging as well. I didn't really wait very long after that last one before I started talking, but I don't see anybody else jumping in. So we will move to the projected agenda discussion. Are there any items council would like to bring up? Seeing none, I would love a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Alderks to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? And Councilmember Kerd, no need to get called on to second. All right, seeing none, city clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Zornz, absent unexcused.
Thank you. All right, first agenda bill for the evening is Agenda Bill 24044, the Downtown Transition Affordable Housing Overlay and Retaining Wall Code Amendments Ordinances. City Manager Standard?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is a series of discussions that is potentially coming to a conclusion tonight. to a conclusion tonight. There are two ordinances that will be before you related to the downtown affordable housing overlay. We're joined at the table by Community Development Director, or at the podium, by Community Development Director Jason Greenspan, primarily to answer any questions if there's any remaining questions. Otherwise, it'll be open for councils to consider adoption. Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Standard. I think it's also important to clarify that this was part of the 2023 docket, the planning docket, and it was an application submitted by the Drews. So this action this evening would bring the 2023 planning docket to a conclusion, and there are two separate ordinances for your consideration this evening that were part of their application, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
We've, we've had a few swings at this already. I, I don't have any questions either, so I would love to take a motion for motion one. Councilmember Aldrich.
I'm going to try to read the text. I move to, I move to adopt, not just consider, but to adopt, an ordinance regarding the downtown transition affordable housing overlay, and are we doing the second one right now?
What?
Just that one?
Just that one.
Okay, so period at the end of overlay.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrich, as stated, and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmembers Zorn's absent and excused.
Councilmember Curd?
I'd like to move that we approve, adopt an ordinance regarding the retaining wall code amendments.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Councilmember Curd and a second from Councilmember Dodd, as stated. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Manke.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Community Development Director, for answering my questions earlier this week. I really appreciate it. No concerns for me on the inward-facing walls. I think, you know, that makes a lot of sense. I do have a few concerns on the outward-facing walls. There's a lot of unknowns, I think, with those. I think a lot of unknowns, not knowing throughout the city what that could look like, not a lot of other cities. We don't know about other cities who have done the same thing yet and the impacts of that, but with anything that we consider, you often don't know the future of what could or could not happen. So I am comfortable with the, with the code as written. I will be voting yes tonight. Also happy that we can look at this and continue to develop it because it is code, and code is living, and code changes. So if we do see something in the future that doesn't look the way that we want it to look in terms of application of the code or unintended consequences, we can then correct and change course at that time. So I will be supporting tonight.
I just want to take a moment because this has been a long and winding road on these two motions for the Drews, and I am so excited that we have folks in our community that are willing to step up and do something difficult to create a project like this. I, I admire it, and I am really excited that we get to have the project that this was put on the docket for in our community. City Clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmembers Zorn's absent and excused.
Thank you. City Clerk. Thank you, Director Greenspan. All right, next up is Agenda Bill 24045, New Updated State Building Codes and Related Bothl Municipal Code Title 20 Amendments.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Absolutely. I'm going to turn things right back over to our Community Development Director, Jason Greenspan.
Thank you very much. Thought I got away with it. The, this is amending our, the Bothl Municipal Code to be consistent with the state building code update, which became effective 12:01 a.m. on March 15th, and I believe the ordinance as crafted would take effect immediately should it pass this evening. It's to ensure consistency with state building code, and we did suggest holding off on the wildland urban interface section of the code, given the uncertainty of the trajectory of those regulations. The Department of Natural Resources is going to be updating some of their mapping over the next year to two years, and we feel it's really prudent to wait to see how that gets clarified, given that we had some mapping now that was a little bit unclear. So I think it leaves the opportunity for us to update in the future. So that's the one suggested amendment that we've made for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodd.
I do have one question that I don't think came up earlier, but I appreciate keeping up with state law. We should match the state code. Is there a way to bake into our code, this is the state law, like kind of just have it so that if the state law updates, we don't require an update on our side to where it just says, like, reference this, or, you know what I mean?
There are often opportunities where we can reference the state code and say, as that updates, we just automatically update. I don't think we've done that in this case with the wildland urban interface as an example, and I think it warrants us having that flexibility in the future, given there may be options for cities. It may not be so black and white as this is what the new law is, and you can just adopt it instantly just by reference. I think it'll give us choices, so I think it's valuable to keep that open.
Okay, that's totally fair. I was just curious. Thank you.
And we'll do some research to see if that's possible, but yeah, from, I'll just say, three jurisdictions and two different states going through this, I'm guessing there might be a reason why you can't, but, but we will look at it because efficiencies are our friend.
Well, and the state has to plan for a lot more eventualities than perhaps would apply to Bothl, so that, that tracks.
Can I ask for clarification? In the agenda, it has recommended action, there's four additional staff proposed items. Did you cover all those? Are there, can you give more detail about those?
I think those were covered at the study session back in February in terms of the four different areas that we're seeking to modify at the local level that would be slightly different from the state code. I'd have to reference those once again just to make sure, if you'd like me to clarify what those are, but essentially they related to removing some time limitations that we have in our current code, clarifying the appeal process, going to a hearing examiner versus it being done locally, addressing sprinklers for adult family homes, and limiting, if not entirely disallowing, mobile feeling. Those were the four areas that we were customizing for the city.
Yeah, thank you for reviewing those in the context of this meeting. I appreciate it.
I will take a motion if nobody else has anything to say. Councilmember Curd?
Yeah, I'd like to move adoption of the ordinance, which adopts the 2021 International Building Code Series, the 2021 Washington State Energy Codes, both commercial and residential, and the 2021 Uniform Plumbing Code, the 2021 International Fire Code, and those four additional staff proposed items as outlined in Attachment 1.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Curd and a second from Councilmember Manke. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmembers Zorn's absent and excused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Agenda Bill 24046, Council Subcommittee Board and Commission Interview Recommendations. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and as you'll recall, at our last meeting, council did make a, take action to appoint a subcommittee to be able to review. We are very thankful for the community's engagement in applying for boards and commissions, and also needing to be respectful of people's time and not have interviews until midnight. So with that, I think, well, I don't know if you have anything to add. Oh, you do. I'm going to turn things over to the City Clerk. I think she has a few more things to add on this, and then we'll open it up to the committee to, to talk through the recommendation.
Thank you. Yeah, so we received a very positive response to this year's board and commission recruitment, as you know, and so due to the number of applicants, the city appointed a subcommittee made up of Councilmembers Aldrich, Curd, and Dodd to review the applications. The subcommittee met on March 8th and submitted their recommendations, and tonight, the council's asked to confirm those recommendations, and if desired, amend them to include additional applicants. The other question we have for the council is based on the number of applicants that we will interview, do we want to start a little bit early, say 5 o'clock on March 26? So I'd like to get a motion and, and on, as to that, not a motion, but do we want to start at 5 o'clock? And, and then a motion to, for the, confirm the interviewees.
As somebody who likes to go to bed early, I would absolutely stay 5 o'clock.
Thank you.
But I am but one.
5 o'clock works for me, too.
I can accommodate that.
Yes.
Works for me.
Thank you. So before you, you have the list of the application, the applicants, and I'll just go through real quickly that the Arts Commission, the Subcommittee, recommend that all, all the applicants be interviewed, same with Landmark, same with LTAC, and then on Parks, we had quite a few, so the Subcommittee recommended several, and the others are listed on a table in case you want to move somebody over to that list, same with the Planning Commission. I can run through the list of names, if you like, of the recommendations, and then if you'd like to add to it or make a motion to approve those, I'd be happy to take that.
I'm happy to have them read, but we've, we've all had the list for, for some time. So if it's...
Do you want me to read them?
We'll read them aloud so that if anybody is watching at home and wonders if they're on the list, they'll know.
Good call.
Okay, so for the Arts Commission, we have A.C. Peterson, Mary Beth Turk, Nikita Takalat, Andrew Swanson, Hillary Long, Sarah Jamshidi, and Sarah Murray Borner. Landmark, we have Andrew Salazar, Vicky Sompie, Andrew Burgess, and Celia Newton. For LTAC, we have Nancy Pippenich and Jesse Olson. For the Parks Board, we have Amy Fidel Macalo, Laura Borner, Elena Tracy, Michelle Cox, Tainan Gable, Amalia, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm hoping I'll pronounce this right, Karas Koliglia. I didn't. And then for the Planning Commission, we have Jeremy Toddros, Yumna Shomnan, Sarah Scarlett Lever Ortiz, Ryan Ellis, Zachary Ott, and Sarah Gusterson. Those are the, that's a list of what the Subcommittee recommended. And like I said, you each have the others that applied for both Parks and Planning if anybody wants to move somebody over.
So if somebody wants to move somebody over, would that be best to do before the final motion, or would that be best as an amendment?
I think so, before the final.
Okay.
I, you didn't call on me.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to speak to our Subcommittee, so we met a week before last Friday, and I just wanted to say it was really challenging to narrow down to an interviewable number of people, to where we could actually interview people and be thoughtful without sort of having so many interviews that I think it would get really hard to distinguish between them. So I just wanted to call out if, for anyone who's watching who isn't on the list, we appreciate your application. The only advice I would have, because this doesn't apply to everyone, but anything you can give us in the applications to help us next time you apply, which please apply again, and also just make sure to include details that help us understand, you know, your interest and your experiences and how that would shape your engagement on a board or commission, I think. But yeah, just wanted to say thanks to everyone who applied, and please don't take it as anything other than a chance to apply again, and we hope to talk to you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
I would just like to echo what Councilmember Dodd is saying, and also put a plug in for volunteering at the community level. We've talked a lot about, boards and commissions are just one way to contribute positively to our community, and so we really do invite people who want to be more involved to look at our volunteer opportunities page on the website and pay attention to, to changes that are made there because we do want to see each, see each other at community events and contributing positively to our community. So, thanks.
Councilmember Manke.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the committee for taking the time to go through all the applications, do the review, and bring us this list. It's a lot of work. It does not go unrecognized, so thank you for taking that on. I really do appreciate it. I do have a couple folks I would like to put forward for consideration. I don't know how best to handle that, probably one by one, so they can all be considered based on whatever merit or justification that I can try to put forward as to why I think they should be included or not. Would that be acceptable to?
Yeah.
Talk down names? Okay. The first one that I would like to add or to have considered to add is Joanne Harkinen. I remember her from last year. I was impressed by the ideas that she had, the things that she said. I also think she has a good perspective, being a long-term resident, retired, and somebody who knows the history of a lot of things around here. I don't, I don't know how many retired folks we do have on, on this board, but I think that does bring a good perspective to how parks are used currently. So she's the first one that I would like to propose adding.
Was there another one? I'd say, why don't we just, why don't we go down the list?
Sure. All right, the second one that I would like to add is Scott Brown. I was just looking at where everybody's located within the city, who's on the list currently. We have one board member from Somers County, and we have one on the interview list for Somers County. I would love to see one additional. In addition to that, I think Mr. Brown stated that he's a parent and he thinks about things in a generational manner, and I like that, and I'd love to hear more from him about his thoughts on that, so I'd love to see him on the list. And then for the Planning Commission, the one add I would like to make or recommend to make is Charles Landau. And looking at his statements, he made some statements about, part of his work is understanding complex situations with trade-offs and working collaboratively to meet organizational goals. I think that's, in the essence of the Planning Commission, a lot of what they do is really digging in to things that are very complex, considering all the trade-offs, working together to come forward with a recommendation to council, and I think I would like to hear more from him as well on that.
All right, before we do that, I'm going to put one person forward as well, but before I do that, I've said this before, but I'm going to say it again, this is probably my least favorite part of this job because we have so many gifted, talented community members that we have to say no, and in some cases, not even interview, people who are really outstanding that want to make our community a better place to live. And I think it's amazing that we have so many gifted people here, and I wish somebody else would do this so I didn't have to tell them no. So if you are watching this, just know that, like, we really do appreciate it, and, and we're cutting this down to make this a manageable number of interviews, but, but similar to what Councilmember Dodd said, thank you, we really appreciate it, and, and please apply again. The one person that I would like to move over is Catherine Sills. I, I met Catherine doorbelling earlier this year and was very impressed by her and think she has a lot to, to offer the community, and I'd like to, I'd like to at least interview her for the Planning Commission. Councilmember Dodd.
Procedurally, do we just take a vote on each person we're adding, or how does that work?
Or could we just?
I, I think you can make a motion to move the Subcommittee's recommendation along with the people that were added just now.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we ready for a motion?
I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. All right, let's test my language skills. I would move to adopt the Subcommittee's recommendations with the addition of interviewing Joanne Harkinen and Scott Brown. Joanne Harkinen and Scott Brown for the Parks Board, and Charles Landau and Catherine Sills for the Planning Commission.
Second. All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Manke. As stated, would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcara?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmembers Orrin's absent and excused, and I will say that the Clerk's office will be reaching out to all the people that were named this evening to schedule them for the March 26 meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, as we mentioned earlier, yeah, it is sunset right now. It is 7:22. We will be breaking for 25 minutes for our community to dine. That would make it 7:47 that we return, correct? All right. We'll be back at 7:47. All right, welcome back. Next up is a study session, as you can see, because we're down here. Agenda Bill 24047, a study session to review initial research and analysis regarding the consideration of tenant protections. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And as council will recall, back in October, you directed staff to come back with some research around tenant protections, and we said we'd be back in the first quarter of the year, and we did just make it, which is good. Tonight, the presentation is really intended to give council a grounding on some potential options, some of the research that's been found. I'll just note that while sometimes when we come for a study session, it means that we're getting close to when an action would be taken. In this case, really tonight, we are here for feedback and to determine if there's further action you'd like to take, further steps. So no formal action is requested tonight, but we will be looking for your feedback. We are joined by the entire team. This is an example of the type of work of where it touches many different areas of the city but isn't one specific program. And so we've had many hands in this work, and tonight you'll hear from our Deputy City Manager, Tony Call, Assistant City Manager, Becky Range, Community Development Director, Jason Greenspan, and our interim City Attorney, Eileen Kiefer. So with that, I will turn things over to Tony.
Thank you, City Manager Stanner. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members, thank you for having us with you this evening. I'm not going to recap all that Kyle said, but I will add a little bit to that and say that, in addition to your direction you gave us in October to come back with some research, you also asked us specifically to look at an environmental scan of rental protections in our surrounding communities. So in addition to this basic research, you asked for some very specifics, and we brought that back for you this evening. Again, no action is required. We are looking for where do we want to go with our next steps. Tonight, our agenda is that I will take on background and key terms. I'll also do the state and kind of regional landscape with the matrix that you have in your Attachment 1, and then I'm going to turn it over to Becky, who will talk about some potential next steps and to close this out. So tenant protections. RCW 5918 gives quite a bit of landscape work regarding tenant and landlords. They provide definitions. It talks about rental notices, move-in fees, security deposit, talks about late fees, talks about eviction procedures. All of the above are included in 5918. Two specific definitions we think are important is a tenant, and it's a person, I don't know that it's a Bothell resident, it's someone who occupies a dwelling unit with a rental agreement. That's some sort of a piece of paper that says you have rented something and signatures are on it. The landlord, on the other hand, is the owner of the dwelling unit or the property, or it could also be their property management company. It could be their onsite manager. It's who is representing the rental to the tenant. So those are kind of the two basic definitions as we move forward, as to the two parties we're talking about. What we have done from a staff perspective, and you'll see a little bit more in-depth matrix in Attachment 1 of your packet, is that environmental scan that was asked for, we focused on four surrounding cities to Bothell that are closer in proximity. Staff acknowledges, and we have done research on other cities, that maybe aren't as close to Bothell, but have similar or more expensive or whatever other rental protections that are out there. Seattle, unincorporated King County, Burien, SeaTac, the list goes on. These four are the ones that we looked at, do the proximity to Bothell. This chart, we try to kind of frame this chart in a way that shows where we have the most commonality across those four cities. So you will notice that the first thing at the top of the page, which is rent increase notices, are similar for all four of the cities we've looked at here. It's 120 days if the rent increase is going to be greater than 3%, 180 days if it's going to be more than 10%. And those four cities also say that subsidized housing, whether it's a 1% increase or less than 3%, the minimum is 30 days increase for anything that's subsidized housing. If it's greater than 3, the other days apply. Under Washington state law, which you'll see on the far right-hand side, it's a blanket 60 days. Move-in fees in all four of those cities, again, are identical across those four cities. They're capped at one month of rent installment over six months. If the lease is longer than six months, you can do it in installments over six months. If your lease is less than six months, you can do it into installments. Washington state has quite a... Let me grab my Washington state here piece here. Washington state has five or six different items under how installment payments can get made, but simplistically, looking at how the other four cities have thought about it, it's a three-month deadline on Washington state law, so if it has more than three months, the tenant can pay those deposits in three consecutive equal installments. If it's less than three months, you can do it in two. That's one of many items that you'd find in the Washington state law. Late cap fees, you'll notice that Kirkland is silent on it, as well as Washington state. The rest of the cities have capped at 1.5% of monthly rent. Can you adjust the rent date? And primarily, that applies to those that have monthly governmental assistance, and the answer is yes, for actually all five. Kirkland is silent, the Washington state law, I'm assuming, would apply. So yes, you would have to provide some sort of documentation about what day of the month you receive your income, and they can adjust the rent date to that day of the month, however that might work. You'll also notice that there is no social security number required for three of our cities that are nearby, and Washington state and Kirkland are silent on that. That does not mean that you wouldn't have background checks. So even though the cities who have said, no, social security number is required, there would still be background checks. They can still check landlords' historical rental reference checking and other ways in which they can get background checks. So the SSN thing is very specific, but you can also still continue to do a background check. There was a couple areas where only one city had something, and they're not on the chart, because it would make the chart way too busy, but a couple of areas where we had one city, for instance, Shoreline, has some clauses that do not allow for charges, fees, for common areas. Washington state law and Shoreline, because Washington state law says that if you are going to have additional fees beyond the base rent, you have to have it in writing and acknowledged by the tenant. Shoreline has that exact same clause. The other cities are silent on it, but I'm assuming Washington state law would still apply to the cities that are silent on it. Kenmore additionally has language regarding a ban on abusive and deceptive unfair practices. And then all the cities, not all the cities, three of the cities, Shoreline, Kenmore, Redmond, and Shoreline, all have language that for compliance, it's a right of action by the tenant, and the state law, Kirkland is silent on it, and the state law talks about the fact that there's a variety of different ways compliance could occur depending on the clause in front of them. So the challenge is, is that our four cities have some similar areas, a couple of areas that they've each done in their own. These areas we seem to find consistently across most cities that are looking at tenant protections. All right? With that, I am going to turn this towards Becky, who could have a little bit about our next steps as we try to understand where council might want to go from here. So with that, Becky, I'll turn it over to you.
So some potential next steps. I think all of you are aware that we're right in the middle of doing a community needs assessment. So what we've done is talked to the team that is working on that assessment. As we do different targeted engagement in our community, we thought it was really important to learn a little bit more from renters, what their concerns are. And so as we set up some focus groups, we can learn a little bit more about how they might be impacted, what they might really need as far as tenant protections, and then use that information to inform recommendations. So, and then once we might know what actions could potentially create the best outcomes for renters, we think it's really, really important to do some community engagement with all of our different types of landlords. So when we talk about landlords, that could be someone who owns a duplex, it could be someone who owns a sixplex, or it could be a large apartment complex. So in Bothell, anytime we make any type of decision, it's really important to think about it with a community-wide lens and understand what concerns landlords may have or how it may or may not impact how they own and manage their properties. And then potentially, after we do that engagement, we could return to you and present you with that community feedback from both renters and landlords and potentially propose tenant protections, if you would like.
With that, that concludes our presentation for this evening.
But it's a study session, so anybody can go. So I guess I will. The... No, I really appreciate this. I really appreciate the work that's been done on this, and I really appreciate the format that we got everything in. It was really clear and simple and easy to understand. The ones that you showed us tonight, I think, are kind of the big ones that I'm interested in learning more about. And I just want to say that I'm really excited that we are doing the needs assessment for human services, so we can get a feel for how important these things are, if there's something that we may have missed. And also, I agree, it's really important to reach out to the landlord community as well. They're members of our community, and I want to know how this is going to affect them as well, and there may be something we have missed in here. So I'm yes to all of that, is what I would say.
I would echo the mayor on that. I think that public engagement piece is going to be really important, and I know that I'm really interested in seeing kind of the overlap between the Human Services Needs Assessment and this work, and to really be able to dig into what we learned there that applies here. And one, so I just remember when I was canvassing in our community, how Lower Maywood was an area where there are a lot of renters, and many of whom expressed just housing burden to me. And I am fairly confident there are some there who were just barely hanging on a couple years ago, who are probably not there now. But I do hope that we can revisit that neighborhood, and so when we talk about public outreach, that, you know, if, I don't know if there can be a door-to-door component, but at least like flyers in particular neighborhoods to try to reach people, I'd really like to see that, because we do know that there are certain spots in the city where people are struggling, and they really do deserve to be heard, and so I hope we can reach out to them. One of the items, thank you for this lovely, this table is really great. But one of the ones that didn't make it up there is the ban on abusive, deceptive, and unfair practices. And my biggest concern with broad language like that is that it's not clearly defined, and so it can be hard to know what applies and what, like, who's interpreting it, how is it interpreted? And so unless we can be more specific, that's one I'm not particularly interested in pursuing. I think, you know, for example, Shoreline has something good going on here, where, you know, one might say that it is an abusive, deceptive, or unfair practice to charge for trash being taken from the hallway to the trash bins, and not informing people when they sign their contract that that is a fee that they will have to pay. And so I think that there are another way of getting at what might be abusive unfair when you actually just write, write your ordinance that defines what are unfair practices without even, you don't have to use the terminology necessarily, but to say, like, this is actually what we're trying to target. So being more specific, I think, is useful. And I think that those are, I get, okay, this is, I'm going to show my ignorance here. If social security numbers are required, how does that work for citizenship or immigration status? So I guess I have a question on how the state law coincides with the practice of asking, like, asking for or requiring social security numbers.
Eileen, can you take that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So all of this is subject to check, and so we will verify it, but it's my understanding that sometimes you may not have a social security number to provide, and you are going to be renting, and so you would just, for a background check, the way I've seen it is, it's like, social security can be requested, or, but it's not like a mandatory, if you don't provide this, you won't get the unit type of a thing. So it's more of a, it seems like it's a permissive practice as opposed to something mandatory. I do note that citizenship and immigration status is a protected class under RCW Chapter 4960. An additionally, Fair Housing Act prohibits national origin discrimination in housing-related transactions. So in addition to the, you know, Residential Landlord Tenant Act, landlords are going to be thinking about, like, okay, I need to be complying with these other things as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying that somewhat. And so I guess, do we already live in a world where if somebody comes to that question, they just skip it and, like, life goes on, and there's not any, like, retaliation or negative consequences for just not providing a social security number? That's the question that I have, and there are probably renters in the community who could set me straight real fast.
I don't know if we can answer that question tonight. I think the needs assessment might help us a little bit, in that we will be targeting tenants in that, and portions of that needs assessment, so we might get some information there. Or we probably can think about some of that outreach component to see how important that is to our renters. Those are the two thoughts that come to my mind. I don't know, Becky, if you have other thoughts on that?
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for considering that. I think that's mainly the notes that I have based on the table and the information you've provided so far.
Thanks for preparing everything so far. This is really interesting, especially coming onto council after it was kind of put on the request. I really appreciate the thought and the energy that's gone into making this. I think one of the things that, you know, bringing something like this up, there's rather unfortunate similarity in verbiage to rent control. I just want to really reiterate that that's not what we're looking at here, because that is illegal under Washington state regulations, and so that's something that is not part of any study that we're doing. We're looking at renter protections, although it's just one word difference. One of the things that I was wondering about, as the needs assessment is being done, I'm curious about outreach, because a lot of times, as Councilmember Alderks said, and there are members of our community who are renters that are burdened, and so asking them to participate in a focus group could be challenging. So are there ways that you have, or ideas that you have in order to engage that community a little bit more?
Yes, and if Onan was here, he could speak to this much more intelligently than I probably will, but part of the needs assessment that's happening, there are some smaller focus groups, and for most of those focus groups, they are provided compensation from the consultant to come in and to meet with our team and provide their input. There's been a first round of interviews with just community-based organizations, helping agencies. I think there's been eight to 10 so far, but there's a series of focus groups. A couple are in partnerships with the school district. The school district has a little bit better way to connect with families or people that are in need, and there's some language-based focus groups. There's like a low-income focus group. There is a renter focus group that's being formed for mobile home community residents. And so I don't know the exact mechanics of how they're compensated, but it's done appropriately and ethically through the consultant. So we're really excited about this particular firm. They have a lot of experience with going beyond just a community survey, but actually embedding themselves into the community and really learning what's going on, so. embedding themselves into the community and really learning what's going on, so. Does that help?
Yeah, thanks. Exciting.
Awesome music to my ears.
Thank you for the summary and for investigating this. I really appreciate the idea of, I think the community assessment obviously makes sense to consider with this. I just appreciated the note, too, about mobile home parks we've heard from residents, and there's been a, just in the area, in city limits and outside, a lot of them being purchased. And with the overlay, there are going to be mobile home parks in Bothell. But there are, there's just a record of people taking advantage of really just raising those rents to make it a more attractive investment. And so some of this, I hope, would address it, but also just outreach specifically because it's a different kind of tendency. You take your house with you and you stop living there, and that seems like a very big endeavor to me, who's never moved my home like that. And so that sounds great. And the outreach to landlords seems really important, too, because this isn't, let's demonize landlords, let's, you know, make it hard for people to rent. This is of the very small subset of people who might take advantage, being in a position of power. Let's make sure that there's just controls and ways to raise your hand and say, that's not okay. So I really appreciate just working with everyone to find good solutions to obvious problems. Thank you.
Quick question for me. Is this exclusively looking at residential, or are we considering business in this as well?
I'm sorry, I can't ask the question. I missed, I missed the-
I'll take a stab, I'll take a stab at it, but Eileen, I'm going to poke at you in a second here. In reading, I'm not an attorney, I like to go completely on record here, I'm not an attorney. But I read the RCW, how's that? The RCW speaks about people dwelling. So I'm thinking it has to do more with residential dwelling. I don't know that businesses would have a place like that, but I, that would be my interpretation. Eileen, do you have something more that I, now that you have given you a couple minutes?
Thank you. Yeah, right now, our scope has been limited to looking at rental protections for residents only. In fact, to, there's, so there's different schemes that cover business rentals, so I don't think that's in the scope right now. It's my understanding that's a different chapter, the RCW. Additionally, too, I note for council, to Councilmember Dodd's note on mobile homes, those are also, depending on the type of tendency, you might be in a different chapter of the RCW. For example, if you rent a mobile home, that might be under one chapter, but if you own your mobile home but rent the lot, that might be under a different chapter. So I think it's helpful for us to hear kind of like what you're interested in, putting in the scope, and then we can do the legwork and look at, okay, what are the RCWs that we need to look at to inform your work?
Okay, thanks for clarifying. I'm not recommending we add in businesses or expand scope. I just wasn't at the meeting, and I think it was October, when this was put on the agenda, so I wasn't sure what the conversation was around that. I think the only comment I have is just, the words landlord and tenant are fun because they're old words, but if you think about it, it's like, they're actually landlords or housing providers, and that's something we've talked a lot about wanting more of in our community, and they're making spaces for people to come into our community. So similar to what Councilmember Heard said about making sure we look at this and frame this in the right way. I do think it's important to get a really good perspective from housing providers on this. I know they take all shapes and sizes. There's individuals, there's families, there's retired folks who want to stay in their house, and they just want to rent out a room, this will impact them as well. There's large corporations, and you can go deep down that path if you want to, and, you know, some are more willing to work with their, you know, tenants than others, and some are very large and, you know, they got their, they've got their script and they're, they're not going to change it for anything because that's just the way they run their business. So I just want to make sure we're looking at this the right way because I do want to keep housing providers here in our community, and I want there to be, you know, that give and take from both party. And I think on the news this weekend, I saw an unfortunate example where there's somebody that's been living rent-free since last year, and the landlord went with a bunch of people and protested outside the home because he was out $80,000 with really little hope of evicting this person in a timely manner, and that's something that is a reality as well. So, you know, both parties housed and housing provider are playing an important role, and it's a role for them to discuss and to come to an agreement on things. And one thing I would like to see us look at is, I know there's the, there's the discussion about percentage of rent and amount of time required to provide that notice. I think one thing that kind of spurs that on, from my experience in renting, was a lot of people in the larger apartment complexes are brought in with like a teaser rate for a shorter period of time. And then when it renews, that's when things get, you know, up to the level where it is unpalatable. And I experienced a 15% rent increase when that happened to me, and that was pretty tough. But I didn't, I didn't think about that. I didn't think of why, you know, why was I getting such a good rate initially and what might happen in the future? But that's something that I think could be potentially driving this. I don't know, just from personal experience. But I just want to make sure we're including all the voices, we're looking at everybody, big, people who are renting from big corporations, people who are renting from private landlords, one-off landlords, family landlords, small units, large units, and then tenants as well, or housing providers as well that are renting the various housing types. So really do get a good look at this. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. The only question, I agree with everything that was said so far. The only question I have is, what is the timeline we're going to be working within to come to a decision?
I think the outreach component will take a little bit of work, do you, Becky? Do you want to, and I think we'd have to come back after that.
Yeah, the needs assessment's actually going to take until the second quarter of this year. And then I think realistically, once that's done, we could start the engagement effort. So I think it probably would be more early fall before we could get to that, after getting through the assessment, analyzing all those results, and then starting the engagement effort.
I was going to say, I'm getting the feeling that's the end of his question. I'm going to jump in again because there were a couple topics that came up that I wanted to just touch on. I agree with Councilmember Aldrich's around the very general language around abusive practices. I would like to deal in concrete, real terms. I'd also really like to avoid antagonizing language that is making some assumptions that I don't want to make, and mentioning abusive, deceptive, and unfair practices seems like it's making some assumptions that I'd prefer not to make. If somebody owns a mobile home but rents the lot, I am very, I would like to have that in the scope of what we're talking about. But I don't care to put commercial in the scope.
I don't know if you're bean counting and you need to hear something four times. But yeah, I definitely would like to have the scope include mobile homes and renting the property instead of owning property. Thank you.
I'll throw that. I'll forth.
We'll continue to look into that and bring it back to you. It sounds like probably in the fall time, as soon as we get through some additional needs assessment work and some outreach work, so we've got a more fuller picture of the community. City Manager Stannert?
The only thing I would add is that with, I don't want to be lost in the conversation that with the Human Services Needs Assessment, the council will see that in the midpoint, too. So if it seems like, oh, we're not going to know what's happening until fall, I do think in that midpoint, we'll be sure to call out any themes, if there's any obvious themes in this, in that first step. And if there's anything to update, we'll bring that in, too.
And if it is, I don't know if this is timely because we're not going to be doing outreach, but Councilmember Mankey, you know, made a good point about, you know, we want to see more housing here in Bothell. So as part of our outreach, like, I'd like to reach out to some builders and just get a feel for, like, what they think and how this would affect them deciding to build in Bothell or not.
Okay. Got the note. Thank you, sir. I think that concludes our time, unless there's other questions for us.
I'll just jump in and say that the fact that we're doing the needs assessment is just great and that we're going to get, like, the work for addressing human needs is going to move forward, even though tenant protections might be a piece of that that's coming kind of later. And so I'm looking forward to that, coming to council. And so when you say Q2, is that like summer-ish?
In a week?
It should be done by the beginning of July, but we'll have the bulk of it done in June, and so we'll be able to report back on those findings.
I would just also like to echo that as well. Like, every time I hear, like, another nugget or detail about the Human Services Needs Assessment, like, I'm like, oh, oh, we're doing that? That's cool! And just knowing that, I mean, just reading the packet and like, just seeing, like, oh, we already have this work in process, like, so we can, we can piggyback on her for this is, is really encouraging. So thank you all for that. All right, adjourned.